Stacy. Started because I think we're all here to some deal. Okay, shall is first discuss the adoption of the municipal water pollution prevention Oliver pole resolution for January twenty third, December twenty three.
That's what we have to remember.
Every year. Uh, next item is, uh, discuss the tractor repairs. This is Mike's gonna talk to us about this whole problem.
Um, our case back though has had a, one of our former employees was doing some work clearing some stuff out of the way, and a limb off of a tree pushed up into the condenser radiator and busted out on little slower windows on the tractor, in the back of it. Um, it's been a while since it's been broken, but I have not had a backhoe to turn it loose to be able to do it. I've got two, one in the shop, and I didn't want to let go of the other one until I got the other one back. And, um, now the case, now it's time to send the case in, and the quote that came back and did the repair was more than my, our allowance. It's seventy-nine, fifty-four, thirteen to fix the problems that's wrong with it, the window, the condenser, the air conditioner, all the stuff that it messed up with, shoved the limb through the radiator and everything. It wasn't done purposely or maliciously, it just something happened during the work that was being done. I just need to get y'all's approval to get the backhoe fixed.
My dude, you told Scott, sometimes I can go, Scott trucking, so it's case dealer.
And that can hold this for a long time, didn't it?
Ah, I'm telling, I ain't waiting up a year and a half to get it back.
You might check the reading.
I have, my case too busy, I can't get him over here. I've tried, I've tried that several times. I'd rather somebody come and do it, it'd be a lot better for me, but he's so busy and can't get to us.
And that's really the only place we have to go.
Yeah, Scott, cause backhoe is a case dealer, they can't, they don't work on them, cause Louisiana deals, so I gotta stay with Scott, unfortunately.
Okay, that'll be up for Monday night, we oughta approve that. Uh, next item we're gonna talk about is the downtown sidewalks. The council had agreed to do all four, uh, phases of that, but they wanted to look at each one, uh, before they, uh, before they actually did approve each one individually, uh, which, well, we waited, and we wait, prices go up, you know, and so, uh, but that's the way we had set it up, we wanted to do it, so, uh, the phase three, let's see.
I've got the region banks on.
Phase three is the region, no.
It's the other side.
Wait a minute.
The west side.
Phase three.
Is the west side.
Is, nah, phase three is the east side. East side.
Which is the side you're talking to.
Phase four is the one by Regina's Beauty Shop, uh, Regent Bank side over there. Alright, they had, when they were working on phase two, they had come in and we had moved them down there to, in front of Regina's Beauty Shop, and they did a lot of work down there because the ladies were fall, had three ladies fall and hurt themselves, and so we went ahead and had them go down there and do that. That was, uh, like sixty-five hundred dollars that we're gonna have knocked off of that bid on that side. It'll be thirty-three-five on that side. And the other side, which has never been touched, is thirty-nine thousand, the, uh, phase three.
That goes all the way down to the Mexican restaurant.
Yeah.
Or it's to go to the end where that, uh, well, the Mexican is probably the old bank.
Um, yeah, that's to the bank, and it stops there at that parking lot at the Mexican place.
Yeah.
Then there's the parking lot, then there's the old Regent Bank up there. Uh, that, that'll be up for Monday night. As far as it holding up, we went down again, uh, to, yesterday, and walked the ones that they have done, the phase one.
Yeah.
It looked, it looked great. Phase two, we did notice that, you know, they put a, a kind of a sand thing over and then painted over it where it'd be gritty, you know, where you wouldn't strip, you know, slip. And, uh, we noticed it looked like the painted more often, the grit was showing, when, you know, like, wanted any ceiling better or something. So, we called the guy and got him up here today, and Mike, and he walked, walked the thing to see, and, uh, and, uh, he said, what, what did he say the reason?
They said some stuff that was supposed to be done the way it's done, he'll come back and take care of it.
They're gonna fix it, pretty, uh, you know, no trouble. Uh, but other than that, um.
Yeah, but.
It's holding up, yeah, it sure is. Uh, so, um, I don't see the reason why we can't go forward with it, if y'all, just up to y'all. That, that, that'll be up for Monday night.
And that will finish it, Mike.
Yes, yes. Phase three and phase four.
Three and, about three and four, yeah.
If you wanna go ahead and through the phase three and phase four, you can go there and do both of those. Or just do one.
Last time when we done it, it keeps going up. It's each and up.
Yeah.
You'd be better, you'd be better off to do it all now, be done.
I don't think you would be, but that's up to y'all.
And that thirty-three-five on the other side is taking off that six-five-hundred, already got it taken off of there.
Yeah, that's why the one's thirty-three, the other's thirty-nine.
Yeah. Okay, okay, the next item, we had a theft at the baseball park that we had, uh, Mike, you might explain to the details on how, how it took place, I, cause I forget, but somebody, first of all, uh, Coach Ware had everything locked up in the concession, that old concession building was locked up, but somebody kinda cut them, you know, that's no big deal for these people around here, that's no big deal to cut the lock. And they cut the lock and took a, uh, a golf cart?
Golf cart.
An old golf cart that had come from the old baseball field up there, it wasn't one we give the ball. And, uh, they stole it. Well, John Ware said he went back and locked it back up, put another lock on, what he said. You say you don't think he did. But, uh, anyway, they come back and took our lawnmower and our green, the green machine.
Drag.
The drag, okay. Alright, so then we go to Will and do, go through our process that we're supposed to with the police, and then, uh, Will, they did recover the, uh, the drag machine. You might, no, how did that happen? I mean.
Well, we don't know when all that stuff was stolen, it had been, nobody had been using it, hadn't been down there and checked on it in a while, and, and we happened to see city workers, and, and we saw some people riding around on one that looked like that one, then when it got reported, I said, well, they had it, so we, we were able to recover the green machine. Uh, zero turn, and I live by a roof of the police, and if it's gone over forty-eight hours, the chance of getting it back's pretty slim. Uh, and we could be looking at it, but they've already painted it, or they did this to it, done that to it, and, you know, without getting serial number off of it, knowing that it's the one that come from the city, but I hate to say it, but it's probably gone, I mean, it's just gone. We arrested the two people that had the green machine.
But we couldn't find who sold it to them? Didn't somebody sell them that for two hundred dollars or something?
They sold it to, allegedly, they bought it for five hundred from this guy, we never could prove. They sold it to another individual here in town for two hundred dollars.
But we can't find the, the original guy that took it.
I mean, can you prove it?
Can't prove it. Okay, anyway, that, that's where we are. Alright, so you go back to say, well, was it under camera, was there a camera on that building?
No.
There was not, there was not a camera, and the building was not well lit either. So, uh, I'm thinking, of course, we're gonna have to buy another mower, and, uh, I, I'm thinking we don't need to leave it out there unless we do something drastically different, uh, like buy a metal building big enough to hold these, this, these equipment, and put it like inside the complex, uh, lit, and then the complex has its camera system, so it would be under camera in there, uh, and locked up under fence. Uh, to me, that, I, we just don't need that, we, we sure can't leave our stuff out there unless we do, do something different.
The only thing I'm thinking about, and I probably talked, when they finished the field, I asked them, you probably remember that night, if there was gonna be enough money left over, would you tear that other mess down?
Yeah, we're gonna get rid of that.
Right, yeah. Uh. But where in the complex would you put?
Back there where the garbage can.
Yeah, that's the way I'm thinking.
There, there's a spot that would look good back there, you know, you want it to look good in that new complex.
But, I'm trying to think, a portable building, that's gonna be easier to break into, them old doors are that thing.
Well, and, and it's a, it's a good idea to put a camera on it, and I know the, the complex has cameras. Cameras are great if they're close enough that you can distinguish somebody's face. If they're so far away, yeah, I see three people, but I don't know who they are.
Where the keys left in these lawnmowers? I'm, I'm assuming they work?
I, I don't know.
I don't know.
I just know they were.
We don't, we don't take care of them, that's the recreation we got over there, that maintaining the watch and control that all over, the, control all that over there.
Yeah, it should.
I was told that the lawnmower was dead, you couldn't crank it, and I was told that the green machine was dead also, and I don't know that to be true or false, but I was told that.
How they physically got it out there, I don't know.
Well, I know they're out there working that, getting ready for ball season and stuff, so.
Well, it ain't hard, and they try to unbox it.
Yeah.
Alright.
Who is, is someone taking Coach Ware's place?
Uh, he's going to be there, since they've already started ball, uh, uh, ball season, he's gonna be there through the ball season, because it's too late to do anything right now. But I've already had one person come to me, uh, put in an application, and then another person was mentioned, and we need to really put it out there, in the paper, we're gonna have to advertise, and, uh, say that we need somebody to fill that position, and then we'll go into a process of hiring somebody. Uh, but it's gonna take a little time, but, uh.
But you got high school coaches that are working out these kids too, so.
You got Coach Brown out there.
Jeffrey Brown, Jason Martin, and.
Yeah, and that, I mean, they, they really do the hard work, you know, anyway.
Can I call you like that? Can I call you back?
But, uh.
What about that?
Coach Brown's not interested in doing it, because he's got like a year left, and, and he's not interested in doing it. He would be perfect for it, but, and qualified, you gotta be qualified, have a degree in that stuff, like Coach Ware did. Um, but I. Well, Mike did, we, we've got some bids here, on some buildings, fourteen thousand from Christ Build, and twelve thousand from Stanford, Stanford Building, it's, uh, let's see. With a roll-up door and a man door on the front, where you can put a light on, and no windows, no, 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 no windows or anything in it.
Worked out a lot ago. This is a small, zero turn, sixty-two inch, I mean seventy-two inch.
Same one we had, and we, we had bought that one from Hallmont, and I called Hallmont, and under state contract, uh, we can get one from them for eleven thousand four hundred. If we get the lawnmower, we can't, we can't leave it out there.
But would it, would it be best to buy the lawnmower and put it to where it's gonna be used every day, and have one of our, the, one of the good ones, you know, that's been around here, but with the fights out there.
And honestly, we need to look at, cause we don't have any tractors that run with, uh, with bush hogs on the back of them doing it.
We have two, aren't they running?
They're about ten years old.
Longer.
That's right. I would think that would be the smartest thing, I mean, to buy one and put it here, cause it will be used every day, and take one of these that we have, that will do that job out there, if you're looking at, maybe loan once a week or so, um, out there.
Out there.
Take a good used one out there, I don't see a brand new one just sitting out there all summer.
They don't use it that much?
Well, I mean, when ball season's actually over, it's about the middle of June.
Yeah.
So, but I know those kids still go out there and work, cause it has to be, but.
You have to maintain it, yeah.
About once a week probably, but some of these mowers running every day.
Well, I mean, that's fine.
I like that. I mean, I think that would be the, they just need a mower. We've done that before.
Yeah, as long as they have one, that's fine.
I would like to keep the good stuff in the rolling stock that's gonna be worked every day.
Um, but that would be coming up Monday night, to see what y'all gonna do with that.
That would be on state contract.
Yeah, yes.
So we don't.
You don't have to have a bid. Okay. Uh, any more discussion on that?
How, I know I bought a building for Mr. Stanford before, it don't take, it took about a week. I think he told us two to three weeks, maybe, but he did what I done, I ordered him, uh, a twenty-one by twenty-five, fourteen foot high shed enclosed, and I made it a bond, and they had it to me within a week. One thing I gotta check on, I don't think that that gate is sixteen foot wide, and make sure he can fill it on site without an additional cost.
To get the lawnmower here.
When the shed is sixteen foot wide, my gate, I don't think is more than twelve foot wide. I forgot to ask him that, but they'd like to verify that, I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna go back, if that's what y'all wanna do. Go back and verify that, see if you can get it in there, cause he told me they gotta have a maid wherever this building's at, and then bring in a truck and put it down. Well, I mean, sooner or later, we're gonna do this anyway, cause if they tear down that other, there's not gonna be anything to store anywhere over there, on that part of land.
No, that needs to be in the future turned into parking, I would imagine.
Or a practice field or something.
Yeah. Okay, um, then, as we were talking about, we had a mower got stolen out of the rec, out of the recreation park, and we gotta replace it, totally were talking about, we gotta even buy the mower, and, uh, um, and then we're talking about getting the shed to put it in, instead of locking it up there, you know.
The only other thing you can do is, they'd have to come, we leave it at the barn, they gotta come get it whenever they need it, bring it back, and that's a pain in the butt, so.
I mean, a kid, you trust her?
Exactly.
Go off to a trailer, go.
Exactly.
Yeah, I did, man.
You can get in with a trailer, just grab it.
There you go. Okay, the next item I got, now, I found this little, I looked a little down here in the room, and I don't know who went on the hood, but I thought, you know, I can put that, I can put that one drawing up on that side, but I'm dragging it in here, but I wanna talk to y'all about the cemetery, okay, you know, the, the council approved, uh, I don't know how long ago it was, uh, on the old council or the dog. Old council, okay. Alright, so we got Cody Goodman to approve the, an, uh, an expansion of the cemetery, because in the old cemetery, which is right, right here, this is the new part of the old cemetery, you know, back there at the very end. Alright, all we got left right now, which we knew it was, it was coming, the fact that we were gonna run out of space, but all we got left is a few plots right here in the middle, back here, in the old cemetery. So, we, we are in a position where we got, we got to do something. Well, we had, at the time, we had more money in the account than we have now. One reason, the drawing of this right here, the engineer, was like twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars for him to do the engineering work on his project.
I need to start your own.
With this project now, it, it's for the future too. It draws all this in, and it goes here, connects back into the old cemetery, does the drainage, it does everything, this will be something that people in the future can go by to make the thing bigger and bigger as they need to be, as it needs to be. But we were gonna do this, this is coming in off of Cemetery Road, and you got, our cemetery's over here, you got an empty lot, you got a kind of a junky house, a little house right here, and some trees, and then you got our property starts right here. And so, this would come on down Cemetery Road, you turn in right here, on this, on this road right here that we're gonna build. This, this extension here, it's gonna be a gravel, it's a gravel, it'll be a space there, where you can drive a hearse or whatever down there to get to these plots. These plots are eighth grade plots, and you can see how many there is, let's see, eighteen, say twenty here, twenty-five here, say forty-five over here, and then you've got access to another twenty-five here, and all, all we're gonna be able to do though, money-wise, cause we have like, uh, one hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars in the account, we've got to leave some money in there, so, I'm guessing about a hundred and seventy, uh, is about all we're gonna have. So, I got Cody to relook at the thing, and he says, yes, we can size it down however we need to, but we would have to come all the way back to right here. All we could do would be to run this road in and have a big turnaround here, and stop it right here. But that would give you access to all these and all these, that would take care of you for several years to come.
Hey, those are new plots, right? Okay, you talking about building that road where that white house is, uh, hide, just fell, there's some. Go past the cemetery, first white house on the left.
That one, right across from what, each of the map faces up.
Yeah, it's right across from the map faces up now.
Yeah, right between them, to the one.
Big tree, it's a big tree.
I see, cause you, you got that white house, and you got an empty lot.
Yeah, that's a lot, empty lot.
Okay, nah, I figured out where you.
It's right across from map faces, town center.
Yeah.
You got forty-nine plots in that.
Square, here?
No, in the front, right there.
Here?
Yeah. Seven times seven, that's forty-nine.
Then you got all this up here. This line is a gas line, an existing gas line that you can't, you can put more, you can't bury over there.
Bill of laws will leave.
I wonder about that, just how you, how, how it's up there.
Yeah, yeah, you can't, you can't, all, what we're gonna have to do, it does cut this corner off, so in the future, somebody might put a, uh, some decorative right here or whatever, you know, for the cemetery, but, but no, you can't, you can't bury on that right there, so it cuts it off like this. But the tiny, to the other old cemetery, it had to be drummed, which, I mean, that would work fine. Yeah. But right now, we're, um, we're in trouble right now, cause there's just not very many left right now.
What's the plot, college?
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five, each, a grade, yeah. And if you sell them, these are all eight grade plots.
Eight by eight, the twenty by twenty?
One, right.
You know, five by ten, eight grade each.
Oh, that's eight.
Oh, oh.
So that's four.
Yeah, bury eight people in that one square.
So, right at four hundred in that, okay, okay, big thing, forty-nine people dying, ain't gonna take long, feel them down.
No, 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 that's not one, right, that's eight.
Okay, okay, it's eight grades, isn't it square?
Uh-huh.
Each square, each square spots, five of each, yeah.
And it was two fifty?
Two seventy-five each, each block.
Each block. Right. And of course, to maintain the cemetery, you know, we have a cemetery fund where we, we send you a maintenance bill every year for five dollars a plot. Eight dollars, eight, I'd say five times that, forty bucks. And, uh, sometimes we get the money, sometimes you don't. Think about it, you know, cause a lot of these people have been dead for a hundred years, and their heirs have been dead, and, you know.
Or gone and don't care.
Yeah, I mean, some you, you just don't, you mail it out, some you don't get the money back. That's just part of it. But we try to, we send them out, we, we did get quite a bit, even.
There's a city already own all that land, like, so land been purchased.
No, we got tons of land.
You gonna need it, cause they locked both down right there.
You know, Ms. Hare, you remember the Hares that lived in that white house up on the hill? She's buried right in the backyard of that house, because she donated all the land to the city, but she wanted to be buried in her backyard.
I heard Morgan did, did that somewhere, that's crazy.
Yeah.
Brutal, that's too great.
We don't know all that over, past her house, and all the way back. That's right.
I got people going in, I'm gonna stay on the side of the line.
Yeah, we've gotta wait for the, for the new ones, but, uh, but not enough to fill up naturally, but, and, and you know, you, you can make do, I mean, you know, these don't, there's don't have to be, there's don't have to be asphalt, you know, uh, like over here in this old park, this is a gravel road here, you know, I mean, you could, we can do a gravel road, you know, but, uh.
That's pretty high through there too.
Yeah.
On that end, if you get on the backside of the hole, it's, it's pretty wet.
Yeah.
It's messed up.
Now, it goes up high.
It's, it's pretty high.
It's a pretty prom.
Real pretty.
So, it, it's a good plan, and it'll work for a hundred years from there, you know, so, I, I'm glad Cody did it, and he did a great job of it too, but, uh, uh, we'll go from there, but I just wanted to update y'all on that, but, I mean, I'm not asking for more money right now, unless something goofy happens, I'll come to and answer some more, but I, I, we're gonna try to do it before we die.
But Cody's gotta re-figure what we, what I wanna do, with the money we got available, see if we can get it done for that, but it's to build on in the future.
Basically, cemetery association sort of takes care of it, so.
Well, it's supposed to, but it's gonna be a time when it's, like everything else, it's, uh.
Where we have to.
Up, up to, up to any, three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to up that, see, that's where you're losing your money.
What's that?
Yeah, the maintenance fee.
Oh, yeah.
That five dollars could cover a whole year.
They're asking about five dollars, so.
Yeah.
Well, if you're gonna do it on page, you can't do it well.
Yeah, I mean, what you gonna do? Come get them?
Some city mowers they.
Yeah, we take care of them.
It used to be contract, but we used to contract it out, then it got, speak to us a little bit, like, city was. Con, that'd be great, contractor tore up our headstone. Yeah, it was, they tore up more, and it messed up more, and.
It's, it's a huge pleasure to keep up.
Kept going up on our process. By the time you get through, it's time to start again.
Yeah, and the weed eating is unbelievable.
It's a good tool for saves.
There's many stones out there, little stones, big stones.
Yes.
One grave will have a big stone and small ones, and.
Someone's got boards, or concrete boards, stones in them, and some, it's a nightmare, it's a nightmare.
If they've been thinking years ago, then they sort of like Rose Neese and Mendon.
Yeah.
Every stone is flayed.
Yeah, you can't do that, Mendon. Everybody just gets one little base, that's it.
And do glitters on that flat inside.
Yeah, that's right.
Do the year springers allow them to put whatever they want to on a grave?
Yeah, they all did.
Trees, you got flagpoles, you got, I mean, you name it.
Well, but you can start on this new section.
You can start that, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go, we go with on that new section, we come back and review it that way, so we're not having to fight that on the day.
That would be a bill. You want your mausoleum, huh?
Yeah, I would tell you to do it, great. Well, I'm, I'm putting one over on the, on the, I end up on top of the hill.
They do that in Santa Cruz, yeah.
Back on top of it, yeah.
Then they float off too. That's what happened in that last one. Yeah, they did, they did. Okay, um, I just wanted y'all to get where what's going on, case people ask you about that, uh, cause we've had a lot of people, when, you know, y'all running out of space, yeah, we are, we are, but we gonna fix it. Uh, next is, uh, the chief has a couple of things to bring up.
So that last month, y'all remember, we had three that, that quit, and did we cover, would John last month hire, hired three, this one, John Walkstrom, uh, I've done a lot of the other use, anyway, hired him with mayor's approval, he never made it to y'all, he's quit, going back to California, and, uh, it's not Leon, it's Lino.
I tell him, yeah.
Lino.
Lino.
You wanna write Leon real bad.
Leon, but Lino, Rob Regan, he lives here in town, uh, he's sixty-something years old, he's been a security guard up at, at Cash Magic, he retired out of the army, um, he made it through the interview, and he made it through the lie detector. He retired out of the army, um, he made it through the interview, and he made it through the lie detector. And I'm just asking y'all to hire him to replace Mr. Walter.
Alright.
You gonna have to stand in with the camera over there too?
Yeah. I got four or five is probably gonna wind up, I mean, and I knew this was coming, that, that the department was gonna roll over and, and at least it hadn't had call of once, it's been a little, a, a time. But he physically fit, and that was one of the things we talked about at his age, I said, are you gonna do an academy? He said, well, a couple of years ago, I ran three miles a day, I said, well, I can get back in.
Oh. Good luck to him, good to Reggie. Okay, that's all I have, unless y'all have something else. Alright, thank y'all.
Well, uh, make a sign, if they didn't wanna catch the G M machine, and watch you compete in ass, cause you got the ice cream machine.
Oh, yeah, pretty good.